And it's not by thirty yet, but we might as well start because I don't want there to be awkward silence. Okay, mine just says by thirty, so. We'll go ahead and call this meeting the order. We appreciate everybody joining us tonight. It's good to be with you. We're grateful for the council. We do have a full council tonight. We appreciate you being here. We'll go ahead and begin with an opening ceremony. We've asked Councilman Goodrich to give us a prayer and then Lieutenant Tucker will lead us in the pledge regions.
Our Father in heaven, we're grateful for the blessings that we receive from each day. We're grateful for the opportunities we have to live in this free country and for the freedoms we enjoy. We're grateful for our city, for those that do so much to protect us and for the opportunities that the city brings to us. We ask thee the blessings as we meet together this night that we will be helped to know what to do in the best interest of our residents and those around us. We pray for these things to do so much in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, and for your honor, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Goodrich and Lieutenant Tucker. First item is the twentieth minutes of January seventh.
Mayor, I found two errors that Sierra was able to correct. There was a second by the mayor, which is not allowed and and there was a motion that wasn't made by me, which I know everyone's shocked by. And so, you know, I think out of habit, they just put my name down, but anyway, I didn't make that one, so. But those two have been corrected and I don't, I didn't see the other, so I'd move approved unless someone else saw something I missed.
Any other discussion or corrections on that?
I'd second that.
That was seconded by Councilman Goodrich. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If that's unanimous. We do have our public comment period. If anyone would like to take an opportunity to visit with us or at least address the council, and you can take up to three minutes, we'd ask you to come to the podium and state your name for the record. Are there any tonight that would like to take that opportunity? No? Alright, seeing them, we'll move forward with the rest of the items on, in our meeting. As far as council appointments, we do have a new officer, and so we're going to turn some time over to our Chief, Chief Walkings for that.
Detective Corporal Kearney, come up please. Bring the wife Danielle with you.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Derek Kearney.
I, Derek Kearney.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Utah.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And defend them against enemies.
And defend them against foreign enemies.
And domestic.
And domestic.
On my honor.
On my honor.
I will never betray my integrity.
I will never betray my integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public's trust.
Or the public's trust.
I will always have the courage.
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself and others accountable.
To hold myself and others accountable.
For our actions.
For our actions.
I will always maintain the highest ethical standards.
I will always maintain the highest ethical standards.
Upholding the values of my community.
Upholding the values of my community.
And the agency I serve.
And the agency I serve.
I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of a police officer.
Discharge the duties of a police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
To help me out.
So help me out.
Well, City Council, we have a special, uh, once hired, this is unique, actually. We brought Detective Corporal Kearney on with actually a promotion. We would like to have his grandfather, Mr. Kearney, come up. Let me point out, Mr. Kearney's actually Vietnam vet, the Marine Corps, and we're gonna ask him to promote his grandson. You can draw up the, what they do in the Marines right now. Yeah, he's a Marine, so you can take it. Go ahead and do the other call for me. Sorry about that. Can you take it to your side really quick? Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Thanks, Chief Walkings and Corporal Kearney. I'm just gonna call you that for, thank you for your service and what you've done for our country. And thank you for being willing to serve here in Utah. Excited to have you. In my own personal opinion, you were a police force the second time, so. Thank you so much. And it's gonna be an exciting meeting, as often as today.
I know. I feel like we're missing out.
Alright, I don't see any need for committee appointments tonight. We did get some applicants for some more committees. Appreciate that. We'll be working on those in between now and March, that we can get fully staffed on some of the committees. But we will actually, President, I know you're on the agenda later on, but instead of making you stay the whole meeting if you don't need to, I know you want to, but if you've got other things, we'll go ahead and just turn the time over to you really quickly and begin at the beginning, and then we'll move on from there.
Great. So I wanted to make sure, this is almost like the year report of what we've been doing in the Red Spire some rec. So the 2024 recap, we had multiple events and some of the new ones that were of significance were probably all of Best of Hot Air Blooms. And I thought, and a lot of this, a big shout out to Vanessa Oaks, who has just put in more than she should, but has been doing a fantastic job with all that. And we're having the progress at Teddy's Playground. We will be reapplying for another mini grant for that as well to keep getting updates, billions, some other things out there. It's made a progress and a lot to do with, all the work hasn't been volunteered that has gone out there. Moonlight has come, Shab has come. One of the disc golfers in the community have just come and put in their time to get the course out there. Cody has himself gone to help draft some of the mountain bike trails and now trying to work with my colleague in the mountain bike team to go help us get that finished off. Granted, they got cold. We don't wanna go out there and it's cold, so that will continue on. Family dinner night, July 4th, pickleball, Jurassic Classic. So we've got a lot of things that have come. For the 2024, again, we'll have the new, 2025, sorry. We'll have the new application for the mini grant. We're also looking to add, there will be continued pickleball tournaments, disc golf. We're looking at, again, we'll be all the best, something that will be new tonight and I think we'll have maybe, who will be sharing about it? I actually reached out to her and talked about Teddy's Playground, saying, you know, hopefully this summer we'll be open for a venue. But she fully has my backing if we get to have an archery shoot out there. I know there are some things we're looking at as far as insurance, but they have APR's full support moving forward with that. And we hope a lot of these things will be a place that we can diversify some of these events and other things that we'll have going on. So we'll continue reaching out to different entities and seeing what, with our new venues that we have, Nature Park, we hope the DNR can be hosting some events out there. We are actively talking though as a committee, what, and actively looking and seeing other resources as to what are the fees for places like this? Or fees for certain events, what that would be per player, different things like that. So we're in active discussions about what to bring as a draft for you guys for Nature Park, for Teddy's, what we'd be good to charge or do for some of these things. Or if it's a community event pro bono, will we waive some of those fees if it's being put on for an APR or what different kind of entity? So we'll be coming with a draft for any of those things. As far as upcoming 2025 events or any concerns from council that you'd like me to bring back to the APR, I leave it to you now to ask me some questions.
Well, I'll just say, first of all, I think what the APR committee's been able to do over the last two or three years has been phenomenal. And we know that there's a lot of hard work to go through with that and appreciate all the hard work and so, and I know Councilman Goodrich serves on that committee. Cody, you served on that committee at NIM, so.
Yeah, he's one of the good stuff.
But definitely, it's been, it's been a blessing to our community, so we appreciate how they've done. I think the activity's been fantastic. I don't have any feedback, other than praise. Are there any thoughts, comments from the council?
No, just gratitude for all the, all the service and all the activities.
Awesome. We're gonna keep it up and we'll let you know. If you guys do have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Thanks, President. Appreciate all the views. Alright, Rhonda, you're up next with the fiscal year 2025 budget reopen. Is he?
Evening, Council. We didn't know if you wanted to do the financial review before the budget. If you want, so I can present that first or if you want to just approach the budget adjustment?
I would just, I would see a financial review here. I just see, but yeah, let's go ahead and look at it.
Do that first, okay. Okay, so for the financial review, I'm gonna show you how to pack it there. I want to just go over each fund real quick, over the percentages of where we're at in progress throughout the year. So starting with the general fund, we're at forty-five point five percent remaining on the year. On the revenue side, we have forty-seven percent, and then on the expenditure side, we have forty-seven percent as well, so we're tracking well there. The next page, on the debt service, we budgeted three hundred eight thousand four hundred and fifty there, expenditures to date, at three hundred eight thousand seven fifty-eight. So those have all been met and the payments, we have a little bit left to pay, and we'll have twenty-six thousand remaining there. Next part, capital.
Just for clarification, the twenty-six thousand we paid for payments, we've had a little over interest payments than we had anticipated. At some point, we've either looked at speaking at twenty-six, almost twenty-seven thousand back into the general fund, it's neither, or leaving it there, so there's less to cover.
Capital projects were fifty-six percent there. That one's hard to compare percentage wise. Projects for the year on the next page, we spent one point eight million so far year to date. We budgeted ten point two, so no good distance there. We collected four point six million year to date so far. And I'll give you, the year to date expenses will give you a progress of where we're at in each project. Next one, page five, we have the water fund. That one, we're at forty-seven percent on revenues and eighty percent on expenditures. Moving on to sewer utility, that was at forty-three percent for the year on revenues and then expenditures seventy-three percent.
I can see really quickly, I'm just on the, on the water fund, eighty-two percent.
Eighty-two percent remaining.
Okay, so I was thinking like, wait a minute.
Yeah, so we've budgeted four point three million, and we've only spent eight hundred thousand so far.
Cause that wasn't jiving, I was like, yeah. It almost looked like we spent eighty-two percent of our budget, so we always kind of eight hundred thousand.
Yeah, these are all five percent remaining. And then sewer utility, four-three percent remaining and then on its revenues and then expenditures seventy-three percent. Do you guys have the next page on the garbage services update? That one here today, we spent six hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five. Sorry, that was revenue. Revenue was six hundred and twelve thousand, expenses are six hundred and fifteen thousand. I'm sure follow that, about twenty-seven hundred on that one. The last page is claim on cash. Let's just tell you where we're sitting as far as cash for the city. So total altogether is the bottom right, the sixteen million, two hundred and ten thousand, and then that just breaks it out by fund. General fund currently has three point five million, debt service hundred seventeen thousand, capital projects three point one, water utility six point six, sewer utility two point eight. And sanitation fund is currently with a set of one hundred, one hundred and forty-four thousand.
This is sanitation fund. I know we, we led to that contract several different times. Is it, we're just not collecting that? We have people that aren't paying that we're still paying for, is that?
I think, the city is no longer, the city is no longer collecting the eight percent on top. You know, that was part of the increase, was that they took that on.
We're collecting a little bit extra, but not near the eight percent.
Fifty cents per can, and it's really truly, our administrative activity has increased, it hasn't gone down. We also, you know, as of last week, it costs almost seventy-five cents to mail an envelope, so, you know, we're seeing a lot of cost increase that pertains to what we're doing with and which the city is not, you know, collecting anything on behalf of that, so. There's definitely, there's some discussion about what we do going forward, because we really do need to get that fund where it's not upside down. That has been something that we've been dinging for a while, thought it in the past, but we can't have that fund sitting upside down. So, which means we have to invest in it, and really that fund is a private business, so, you know, that's something that needs to be considered.
Is the mailing of our bills coming out of the sanitation fund?
No, they do not, they do not pay a portion of that.
No, but do, where, where does it come out for us when we mail those?
It's divided between the water, the sewer, and the general.
Those split, but doing those, okay.
But when it comes out, it doesn't debit the sanitation fund?
Have we looked at outgoing paperless and encouraging our members to go paperless on those lately?
It's been talked about. I don't really know how far we've gone with that. I do know that we have, we have a lot of the residents, more of the residents who are paying online now, which is good, and yet we're also seeing, that's part of what you'll see in the budget reopen, is they charges are going up because the cost of, of online activity, again, we're, you know, we are absorbing that, the city, between the water, the sewer, and the general.
Any other questions?
Okay, so I want to see the budget adjustment request. If you want to keep that last page up, that'll kind of be a reference on where these funds are coming from. So starting at the top foot there, we had the placer tracker, AI tracker, we were gonna remove that, but we decided to leave that in place, so that one was removed. Or left in the budget. We're gonna take it out. The APR parts, those next four there, the thirty-five hundred, eleven, five, fourteen thousand, and five hundred and forty. Those are all revenue that we've already received. We're just budgeting for that so those funds can be expended. The animal shelter, those are the same. Those revenues have already been received. We seem to get those budgeted so that money can be expended, the twelve thousand and nine thousand. And then the police department has an increase in travel and training budget. This is for the FBI training. Utah Chiefs Association, a new officer post, an increase in lodging costs. The next one for six thousand is to cover homicide expenses, and they did provide also breakdown in your packet, I believe, of what those costs, what make up those costs.
Chief, is the FBI training, is that FBI task force?
No, that's the FBI Command College I attended a couple of months ago.
Okay.
Moving down to the wellness grant budget, that one is increasing by six thousand seven hundred. Those are grant funds collected in, in last fiscal year, being spent in this fiscal year. That's the No Year Force. And then the, the next two, the seven thousand dollar revenue, and then seven thousand dollar budget is for the ICAT grant. So those will just balance each other out. The next one for the five thousand dollars, increased FBI revenue budget, and that is a reimbursement estimate for fiscal year twenty-five.
Mayor?
Expenses are reimbursed.
That would be the FBI, but it's just a reimbursement. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. And then the five thousand dollar reimbursement for DUI shifts, that's an estimate on what that revenue will bring in. And then the next line, the four thousand is to adjust that so that over gone the right goes to wash each other out on revenues and expenses. Then we have the JAG grant for the fiscal year twenty-five, and the amount is six thousand four hundred sixty-five dollars and ninety cents. So we're budgeting that revenue. And then the twelve thousand is to cover shortages on this cell phone bill. And then the two thousand three hundred is to cover shortages on the overlap of programs as we transition from title. So all that total is seventy-three thousand eighty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents, and that will come from the capital projects fund, for three point one million. Any questions on that, that section there?
So all of the APR stuff is just donations you're adding to their budget?
Yeah, so they receive those funds, initially they have a budget so they can spend them.
It's pretty impressive.
Another reason to appreciate them.
The next page is capital projects. That first one, we're reducing that budget by twenty-five thousand. That's to account for the money saved on the flooring, so that came out of the budget. And then the two hundred and fifty thousand is the amount over budget to complete the work on the state street pedestrian crossing. A total of two hundred and twenty-five thousand, and that will be coming out of the PTIF reserve funds. And then the sewer fund, that one is asking for nine thousand five hundred to cover the costs of having trucks come out and do some work as our back truck is down every time. So this is just covering the cost that we had to pay them to do that electrical sampling, so. And that will come out of the end price from the county.
Trying to show you how valuable that truck is.
Yeah.
Any questions from the council on those modifications?
Maybe, maybe Sarah even mentioned, but I'm just curious, just in the background, the cell phone expense increase, how we missed that?
For the police department, almost at the bottom.
So the police department has been on strata for our cell phones as well as line line and broadband and, you know. So we recently switched over to FirstNet, which should bring in a savings, but when we're looking at where they're at on the budget, we don't have enough budget to cover what's being expended there, but neither, Ellen and I talked about this, Lieutenant Tucker and I have talked about this, neither one of us handled the strata bill that's handled by, you know, other staff. We need to do some research, because I have a feeling that the, the police department is being charged for more than their share of what that strata bill. So there's a good chance that there might be a credit that will move to another department to help cover this. But this twelve thousand is to make sure that we have enough to pay for the cell phones through the end of the year, barring any adjustments.
Okay. Thank you.
Just for us to pick some of that landline too.
Yes, it's broadband landline.
Not just the set of yours, the landline for the folks you have in your office.
And the broadband and something else.
So the FirstNet is just cell phone?
FirstNet is cell phones and then it's also the wireless books that they have to have in their car, so their computers are on. And then the LPRs, which are the license plate readers that are on the highway. I've seen those.
Because these were down, the license plate readers.
So there's some, there's some additional ones, but they're all SIM cards and, and that bill's been pretty easy. It's sixty-nine hundred almost every month. But it's not, the whole thing has got kind of messed up.
Yeah, we have not seen the decrease. If we got into looking into that, we haven't seen the decrease I would have expected with strata, so.
Interesting.
See, and I started looking into that today. We didn't get as far as we had hoped, so.
Well, thank you for answering.
Hopefully you're gonna find that and not have to expend that money, but.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
I would move we approve that. There's no questions that we approve the amendment budget.
Well, with the budget reopen, do we have to have a public? Do we have to have a public hearing?
Yes.
I didn't see that on our.
I would move we go on to public hearing to discuss the budget amendment.
Was that public hearing advertised? Okay, just wanted to make sure. Alright, we do have a motion to move into public hearing. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll consider ourselves in a public hearing for the 2025 fiscal year budget reopen. Are there any comments from the public? Seeing them.
I would move we go out of public hearing back to regular meeting, regular council meeting.
Thank, that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman White, all in favor?
Aye. I would go ahead and we move to approve these budget adjustments. We have the funds for them, Rhonda, and so, and obviously we need to make them. Some of these, we already have the funds, it's just giving them a license to spend them, so that's a good thing. So I would move we approve.
Motion to second by Councilman White, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. We have the 2025 streets reconstruction and transit replacement engineering contract. Jeff, you're back with us tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, hopefully what I sent in helps. So, this is part, so when Kirby and I dug into it, would it come to council before included this work as well as some of the page bench, water line replacement and other things that all came together? So what I did is I just stripped out, and this is the project that's being discussed right now. So, again, I didn't include a map, but Bonney Drive one thousand west, two hundred west over by the dialysis center. Well, that is the map, man. So there's sewer, it's quite a large, multiple aspect project. So there's sewer in one thousand west Bonney Drive. There's transit line replacement over there. There's transit line replacement by the dialysis center. And then, that line is one road off, but, and then there's one hundred south as well, that's a block long. So the, the overall project itself would come to council back in August, along with the, some of the page bench stuff. And then hopefully this clarifies what our, the anticipated fees would be for this work.
Where's the one on one hundred north?
It's one hundred south, maybe that's in the road. So that line is actually off. It should be the road over, so like between the dialysis center and the old hospital, that road's gonna be done. And then basically right down there, so kind of by the Kingdom Hall, there's that really bad road.
I think that's the one that I was, that's the one that.
Yep, and all of these are, are replacing all of the underground that needs to be done and then rehoming and complete roadway surface. Replacing any curb and gutter that's got issues.
And is that the total of two million that you're showing?
Yep.
Now, the question was, because some of that was going to be tied in with some other grant money we've had for page bench and other things. Where's the money being budgeted from in this one?
So Ron could probably answer, but my understanding from Kirby is that there's money in the budget for all of this to cover the whole thing without transit. If we are able to use the transit, then that would reduce the expenditures out of the city's budget and use the grant funds.
So you already have grant monies, nobody else coming in to cover all the costs but the transit?
No, all of this money would be money that Kirby asked for in the budget.
I think page four of seven on the financial report. In the middle of the page, there's fiscal FY twenty-five zero zero nine and FY twenty-four forty-two.
So I think there'd be in C road funds, and then I know he's got some sewer funds allocated to it to even.
Roadway service project, you have six hundred and fifty-three thousand. He's talking about using both of those two, so.
Okay, and that was the discussion before, because where you guys proposed being funded with grant funds versus, you know, general fund or capital projects funds, so.
Perfect, okay. So I proposed to be there at the bottom. I run through these with Kirby. But that's kind of where we ended up on things. The typically how these work is, we're able to estimate really well what is needed on the design side. But depending on the contractor, they end up getting the contract, sometimes things are, there needs to be more observation or less. So we typically do those, the construction assistance hourly. And so what we try and show is more, mostly a worst case scenario, like if we need to be there all the time, this is what it would be. To get a good contractor, hopefully we come in under that, and you guys will receive that and sit back.
So that's a worst case scenario, two fifty-nine, six hundred?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, it's a little bit, I mean, it's a little bit on the higher side, but normally with projects thirteen percent of the project cost, but. I don't think out of, out of the.
Yeah, it's, it's probably a little higher if it were just all road or, and even the water lines are pretty simple. Some of the added costs is just we're replacing a sewer in place and making sure that works with all the services and everything else. There's a little complexity there.
Gotcha. Any questions for Jeff on this? Thank you first of all for bringing this back and helping us understand the scope of the project and where the engineering costs are going to be.
Yep.
You bet, thank you for that.
Yeah, I spoke with Kirby and he wanted to just make sure we get this going ASAP because we want to get a good contractor and they're already starting to get ready to start bidding stuff out, so.
Yeah, Kirby's pretty anxious.
I would, I would move we go forward with this.
Okay, we do have a motion. Do we have second? Second by Councilman Allen, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you. Think am I the next item to? Okay.
Yeah.
I would invite Ryan to it, just if you want to give any plugs about this, so. We just wanted to, Ryan and Kirby and I have been talking as well as a few others. One of the, well, the first project listed in your transportation master plan, as well as, you know, others, other entities is this stretch of Eighth South from Fifth East to Fifteen Hundred East. It is a little bit of a weird location because some of it's in Roosevelt, some of it's in Duchesne County, and some of it's in Ballard, right? But based on, you know, where it's at in your master plan, and then Ballard, as many of you have probably been aware, has been working on that stretch of Fifteen Hundred East from Highway forty down to what they call one thousand south, right? So we had just kind of a quick powwow to discuss between, we had, you know, Ryan and Kirby. We had Ben Mauer from Ballard, and then we had, this meeting happened because Duchesne County Special Service District number two and the county itself are updating their transportation master plan, so it was kind of a stakeholder meeting there. And one of the projects that was discussed was this, and some of what came out of that is just trying to determine everybody's appetite on pursuing this project. Obviously, you guys have done a decent amount of work between State Street and Five Hundred East as well. This red line's kind of a future, long-term corridor build that would kind of be more of a loop around the city. But the district, Special Service District number two, they, there would probably front most of what the county's portion would be. So they, they are supportive of the project. They would probably not lead it. But in their last board meeting, they did vote that they would contribute up to a half a million dollars in math, in, you know, straight in cash to take toward the funding agency application. I know there's been some discussion from Ballard. They'll actually discuss tonight in their city council meeting as well. And overall, I think we just wanted to get kind of the appetite of the, the council, just to see if this is a project that you feel like is worth, at least pursuing in the, in the funding aspect right now, the feasibility stage. I did, I think I included a cost in there. I, I probably didn't get you that updated PDF soon enough, but.
Three point eight four?
The total hasn't changed, but the, I had done it, I had a math error in the dollar amount per entity. And I can pass this around. It actually changed, so. Special Service District's one and a half million, Roosevelt dropped to one point three, and then Ballard's one million, and I'll explain why that is.
One question that I have, the portion of, of Eighth South between Eight, between State Street and Five Hundred East. We've got a, a turning lane in that that's really little. If this becomes a major road, what's going to have to be worked on there to make that an actual?
So my understanding is it wasn't supposed to be that way. I think there was an attempt to discourage people from parking on the shoulder of the road. And I think, and we can argue that one way or another. I think what would probably happen, so like Fifteen Hundred East, what we looked at with Ballard is, and the anticipate of what this would look like, and I think this same stretch you're talking about, ideally it should be just two twelve-foot lanes with a wider shoulder. What we're looking at is actually a narrow shoulder than the portion you guys have, so it wouldn't be conducive to parking on the side of the road anyways. But that's why I think that is there, is because they just wanted to throw something in the shrink, kind of, you know, paint the shoulder smaller so people wouldn't park on it, yet they still do, so.
Yeah, so the special service district, so Duchesne County, basically, the overall project length, they have fifty-two percent of the project length?
Correct. So the way, the way, and this is still all really preliminary, this can still be discussed, right? I just want to get something on paper first. The way that I've looked at it so far is we've, I've taken essentially all of the roadway work excluding a culvert and fill and things like that. And I've split that up based on the length of roadway for each entity. And then, again, this is all preliminary, so don't take it the wrong way, but the, what, right now Roosevelt's got the culvert and all of the fill. Now, there's, I know that the line between the city and the county is in the gulch somewhere. And I think it's on the east side of the water, but it's in the gulch, so I think realistically there could be additional cost sharing there. Like I said, this was just a stab to get, to try and break something out and, and show. So, but the overall cost estimate hasn't changed, that three point eight four. And even these match numbers up here are just, again, it's just a stab in the dark, trying to say something. If you can see on the one I passed around, I did talk with Ballard today before I came here, and we've actually had their contribution to like three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Essentially, what we're targeting is somewhere in the ballpark of bringing one-third grant, uh, match and pursuing two-thirds grant. So nobody has to take on a loan or anything like that. The plan would still be to go to like the county themselves to see if they would come up with little contributions as well and, and a few others, but. Again, the, I think the desire tonight would just to be, kind of fill out your attitude towards continuing conversations with the other entities to see where we would get to. This is all just, again, a very quick stab in the dark.
Price all the red?
Uh, no, it's just the stretch, yeah, just the stretch from Fifth East to Fifteen Hundred East.
So my, my initial thought is just, it, it appears that Roosevelt has the least amount of area to pay, but the biggest liability. And I just, I hesitate with that as far as our residence code, just because, you know, the county, I'd like to see maybe a little more participation from the county and a little more participation from.
Ballard.
From Ballard, to even make it to where it's, you know, a third, a third, a third. It would be better in my mind. I think the project's a great project, it's just one that has been on the, you know, on the burner for a long time, and I think it's a great project. I just, I just want to make sure that we're, we're being fair to our residents and, and making sure that the other entities are, are being fair with us.
Yep, and I think that's a great point. I think that's the desire, is if there were like a committee of council members or, and, and staff together that, you know, would be essentially able to go and start these communications. Again, this is very preliminary, right? But to make sure, right, because there's a lot of those discussions that need to happen to make sure everybody feels like they're paying their fair portion. You know, there's still a lot of things to be figured out, but this is, you know, from, from I think a lot of people's standpoint, this is a great project. I know there's been a little discussion with at least one of the school board members and, you know, there's a few others that are involved that know about this, like this. I think this would be huge for, for all the communities. That's why it's on the master plans, right? And I think, again, at this point, it'd be just like if there's a desire to, to see what this could look like and what agreements could be made to, you know, who would pay for what, I think that's where we're going, to see if, if everybody could be on the same page to then pursue something.
What do you think the likelihood of getting a sixty-nine percent grant would be at this? I mean, what's the?
So I think if I upped that, would we talk about sixty-five, thirty-five, or that ended up at?
Yeah, I guess, yeah, I'm just curious.
Our field from, so some of the discussion we had with the district, Special Service District, at one point Ballard was thinking about applying for joint highway money again. That's what they funded some of their, their portion of Fifteen Hundred with. They were thinking about applying for that again. It's just like, you know, a three-year out cycle, and it's federal money, and it's got a couple downsides. One of the discussion points that came up with, with meeting with those entities together is they, you know, those of us that were in the room felt like it would be better to pursue something like CIB for that, and, you know, our, I feel like everybody feels optimistic if you come with that much grant. What we would show to CIB is not only are we just, you know, yes, we're asking for more grant than match, but when you start looking at Roosevelt City's already spent multiple million dollars, multiple millions of dollars on Eighth South. Ballard's already spent six or seven million dollars on Fifteen Hundred East. There's still these other portions that need to be done. That portion of grant is actually still relatively small in the grand scheme of things, and so we definitely see that work for. You never know. Maybe you guys have met CIB, you never know the temperament, but with the, the support from all of the entities, I, I think there's a good chance that it could happen.
Jeff, Jeff, question. Is Ballard still interested in taking the lead on the application to CIB? It was talked about, but are they still thinking?
I would say that's one of the things they'll talk about in council tonight. I don't have an answer on that.
What time is their council meeting?
It's at seven.
Okay, I might slip over there.
Yeah. The only person I've really talked to is Ben. I've mentioned it to one of the council members, and there's definitely support there. And I think it's, you know, whether it's Ballard or Roosevelt, whatever, I think the desire again would be, we want this to be a great project of everybody working together and not one person feels like they're left with, sorry, the issues of a project or a loan or something like that, right? So I, I, again, I'm optimistic. They have mentioned that they would probably be willing to do it. Obviously, that would take some MOUs and a few other things in place, but if they knew that they could go into it and they weren't going to be saddled with covering any over, any extra overages, no matter where that happens in the project, I think that that's definitely a possibility.
And that's where I would, that's where I would also advocate for Roosevelt City if we're, if we're paying the majority of the costs and then we leave the, you know, leave the application for CIB and then we get stuck with any of the issues that, I mean, we're in a. You know, it's just in a, in a real poor spot, I think.
Yep, and those, like I said, those are the discussions that need to be, need to happen, because I think, at least from my discussions, I think all entities are on board. This is a great project, and I think all entities are on board that they want to cover their fair portion, but want to manage their risks too, right? And so, because I feel like that it's in a pretty good spot, but it's going to take some legwork and, and I guess that's where, I think we're all hoping that there might be a designation of somebody from council and staff to help at least start those conversations. And again, there would be plenty of communication with council before anything went forward, but got to start somewhere.
Along that stretch, is there all the road that Roosevelt City has, is anything happening to that, or is it just the additional road that hasn't been?
The only thing that this three point eight million dollars would do is go from Fifth East to Fifteen Hundred.
Okay.
It would be, what's, what's estimated in the cost is twelve-foot lanes, one in each direction, four-foot shoulders, curbed better than sidewalk.
One thing that I will mention though, on the, on the portion running north and south on the west side of the project, I think we did get a grant to go ahead and do a study and a concept on that.
Study and design.
So we, we already have a, a pretty good idea of what that'll cost. That's the one that has the budget, I, of course, but.
This makes a good loop between the schools.
Yeah, we got a grant.
Yeah, it's like two hundred and sixty thousand dollars or something to do a, a study on intersections and everything like that, and then enough design to where it's essentially shovel-ready.
Yes, you do have the design for that road.
I, I think coming over the gulch down on Eighth South would be beneficial for high school traffic for sure, just because that's a huge bottleneck in the morning.
High school traffic, another thing we talked about is fire department. Nothing necessarily get called out and right there every time, but you've got a few elementaries. You got a lot of people who would go that way even to get to a senior academy from Roosevelt and other things to avoid Highway forty and looking at the street.
And we don't, well, I was going to say, we don't have it real good. I've, you know, secondary road through there, other than going clear down.
Full line?
Yeah, full line.
I think there's appetite to look into it for sure, but I also agree the mayor, we want to make sure to minimize our liability.
Yeah.
And make sure it's fair.
Yeah, make sure it's fair.
Is fair.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I think there's definitely.
And we can continue to work through Ryan and Josh and Kirby to kind of pursue some of that, but we wanted to let you know that that discussion's come up and and there's definitely appetite from the other entities to help pursue it as well, so.
Is the yellow line going through the fields, is that Ballard City?
That's not, ultimately the county line, yep.
So between, from going west to the gulch, that would be the county.
Yep.
And then east of that line, it'd be Ballard, and then ours is from Fifth East to the gulf.
Yeah, down into the bottom of the gulch.
Remind me, does, does Roosevelt City just go a little past the gulch? It doesn't go all the way to county line there?
No, the city boundary's in the bottom of the gulch essentially. Yeah, if you can get on the, the county parcel viewer, it's, it shows, but.
The line's straight, it's the gulch kind of.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we're just taking, basically.
So you have a small length, and, and again, I drew something on there just to get it on paper, but those discussions now still need to happen is there will obviously have to be a culvert or something down there. I know this would tie in with like the trail system and other things. Like I said, all those discussions still need to happen, but Roosevelt by far has the shortest length. But there is a decent portion of that that's in, I mean, all of your length essentially is in the gulch too.
Right.
So.
I think what Mayor said about this split and that in thirds would make sense because the cost of the road is the cost of the road. And just because somebody else has a more expensive part of the road doesn't mean you shouldn't participate in it.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree, and I, and again, I'm, maybe I'm too optimistic, but I feel like if we can get the county itself to donate a little bit and we can consider having Ballard go to UNA County and ask, you know, like it's, again, it benefits a lot of different people regardless of political boundaries, and I think any little contribution from those will help it get down to where ideally we're reducing everybody's match contribution overall and able to, you know, use that to get a decent grant and pursue something that doesn't cost taxpayers a lot of money, at least out of the city, out of each individual entity, but can address a big need, so.
Mayor, on, on, you.
Go ahead.
Not, not the parking or each town, there'll be no. no, no, uh, center line, but there would be no on-street parking then?
Well, they're just saying that i- if you had two twelve-foot lanes, you'd take the center lane out, two twelve-foot lanes, and then there'd be wider room for parking on each side, right?
Yeah, on the portion where you live, if you were to paint the center line in the middle, there would be ten-foot shoulders or something.
Yeah.
I, I wouldn't, I would think when we build this stretch of road, there wouldn't be a need to have huge shoulders.
That big of a.
And so we actually, there wouldn't even be room for on-street parking.
In that section.
In this new section.
It wouldn't affect the parking where you're at.
Okay. And I, I have no, real off-street parking.
Yeah, because we could, I mean, worst case scenario, well, we wouldn't even need to re-stride the road, but if we did, you'd have.
You can always move, I think. Too busy.
Boy.
I would be initiated. Yeah, I, I mean, probably, I think it, you know, I'm not here to stand in the way of anything, but just kind of learn, prepare myself for it.
Yeah. No, it's interesting. I, I remember being on the council almost twelve years ago when that project started moving forward, so. And a lot of things are starting to happen down in that area now.
Street dead ended at our house and now it's gonna be up pretty late.
Well, you just need to get the racing lights up, you know? They, they do it anyway. You might as well sell tickets and have some entertainment.
We, we do have some, some, uh, legthirt people, but for the most part, uh,
Yeah. I think our police has been aware of that too and they're, they're gonna put on more. I know I've seen them coming, but I think it's a good project that they, you know, it's made the conversation for.
Perfect. Sounds good. Thank you.
Mayor, one thing I do want to bring up, Kirby will kill me if I don't share it because I told him I would, but in our master plan that we did in two thousand nineteen, this particular section of road is actually listed as the number one
Yeah.
on that list, FYI.
Yeah, I know it's been a high priority and I think it's something that everyone wants to do. You just want to make sure that everybody's participating very in the project. I think it'd be great. I think with three entities going to C I B with that much.
You'll get funded.
I think it'll be, that's what I'm, that's why I was just wondering what C I B's, I don't think we've had a project in C I B for you know, eighteen months or so. And I haven't really felt out how, what the climate is, you know?
Yeah. It's not a huge project either for C I B, right? Like it is a decent sized project, but two and a half million dollars to them is pretty common.
It's all, yeah, it's just the grant.
But it's all in the eye of the hooler, right? Like sometimes they're weird, but.
Right, yeah. A lot of times they, the, anyway, but it's worth a shot.
I think there's, there could, there should, there should be a lot of support for this just because it benefits every entity that's in it, you know?
And they do like to see that.
And if C I B's listening, we love them. And I don't think they're that weird.
Thanks, Don, for buttering the love. The revised Duncan Road expansion, right?
So this came into the city council, oh, a few councils ago.
Yeah.
If you remember right, and Yona Wax had three proposals. Well, this is one of them that we passed. However, when they went back to the drawing board and actually got out in the field, the easement, the, the original right-of-way was twenty feet, um, in that section there, but the semis it was pulling. So this, to back up, this is for the Duncan pad out of the sewer farm. And this is the turnout that goes towards it around the hill. But after they got proceeding forward with it and the trucks, they decided they need more room than twenty feet.
He mentioned this when he was here last, didn't he?
She did, Leslie did.
Yeah, Leslie.
Yes. Yep. And so what they're, um, requesting is to bump it up to eighty feet. Um, we see no issues or concerns. Our staff goes, so our recommendation would need to approve and based off the approval of, um, grant as well.
Just this, this section, right?
Yeah, it's just this section alone.
It doesn't impact anything with what we're doing with the gun range or anything. It's just, it's really.
Just make it more convenient for them to do what they need to do.
And the trucks are gonna use that area anyway. If we don't, if they don't clean it up, they'll have some issue there.
I would move we, we approve. I don't see any problems with this, especially on your recommendations.
So, so with this, there would be a right-of-way drafted, I'm guessing, is it standard language or is there anything special?
I would like to do it upon approval of.
Yeah, so it's a good.
I would add that to my motion. On approval, legal counsel.
Hey, we do have a motion on the floor. I have a second by Councilman Baird. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion is unanimous. And then Cottonwood Creek Trail, bridges and there. Bridges and, bridges and the bridge abutments.
Okay. So the bridges, we, we went and received some bids on the bridges and, and I wanted to just think, entering the sunrise, it, it was pretty hot there for a minute, but we got them done, so. Um, and the one, so the bridges are the exact same as the nature park, other than one particular, um, part of them, and it's the floor. Um, the ones that we're doing through the trail system, they have the wood panel, you know, they're a lot cheaper. And so that's what we proposed. We did receive bids. Um, the one that we're recommending, so this is bids for three bridges, a forty-foot, fifty-foot and a seventy-foot. And if you scroll down just a little bit here, there'll be a total of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand. One hundred dollars is our recommendation to reward it, to contact. They did our bridges last time. They were awesome to deal with and, and quality work, as y'all know, so.
So the bridges that we have right now, they're, they don't have the wood, they're all metal or?
They're, they're cemented, yeah. Yeah, and that was for A D A purposes and.
Let's see, O and M on the wooden?
Um, they, when, when I spoke with them and, and Aaron may be threatening if I'm wrong, they're pretty proud of it. I mean, they don't, they put a Douglas fir in there that's three by twelves treated. Um, they didn't give me it exact years, but not that often. And, and I've kind of paid attention to the bridges around St. George and everywhere, and they seem to hold up pretty good, so.
My guess is maintenance on them, if you do good maintenance, then they don't have to be replaced, but I would anticipate oil on them or.
Yeah.
You know?
We can carry the surface, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, so yeah, so a hundred and eighty-eight, I staff recommends, and we.
Was that what was budgeted for them?
So interesting thing, I did the math from last time we did the bid and square footage and everything and, and by going the wood direction, um, we're actually eighty-six dollars per foot cheaper. And that was two years ago, we're getting that bid, so.
For square foot or linear?
Per foot, linear foot. Yeah.
Square foot, we'd be, they'd owe us money.
Name two, it's sunrise, I'm jumping ahead right here, but I went back to our cost estimate when we got the project proposed and between the abutments and the bridges, we were, we were within almost three thousand dollars, which is a pretty good guess. No, I shouldn't say guess. That was a very good estimate.
So, but it wasn't the budget for that?
Yeah, yeah, it's in the budget.
Do you want me to do this? The bridges, that's gonna be abutments while we're at it, so we can total.
All right, so the abutments, we've got six abutments for the bridges. Um, and it's, and I do have all the other bids and stuff right here. But the one that we're recommending going with is Maverick Construction, which I think is on there if you scroll down.
Did they do the last ones?
They did.
That's what I was thinking.
Sixty-nine thousand, seven eighty?
Yes, they're, they came in and did sixty-nine thousand. There it is, right there.
What's the sixty thousand total?
Yeah, so the total that was estimated for it was two hundred and fifty-five thousand and with the two of these is two fifty-seven, eight eighty. And it is within the budget, overall budget of the project.
Any other questions? And did you bid the concrete out to a few different?
Yeah, and the floor.
Any other questions from the council?
So you're moving with, you, you recommend both of these and, and feel good about it?
Yeah, I, yeah, I feel really good about it. And the sooner we can get it coming, the better with the bridges anyway. They take about six months to get here, so.
I would move you approve that if it's in the budget.
Our motion was second.
Is, is this for both of them?
For both of them, yeah, prove them forward.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Other than opposed.
All right, thank you.
Aaron, you're up. The three archery shoot at Teddy's Playground?
Yes, for the last few years, we've been trying to, um, get Mindy Mayer from Vernal, who's here tonight, and have her come on as well, but we've been trying to get her over here to utilize her expertise in archery with classes and leagues. And she just reached out to us recently of an opportunity to host a state three D archery, archery shoot. So she can tell you a little bit more about that. And we have reached out to, um, the trust and they said we're welcome to host it. There's an obligation on our end to just, just host it. They did encourage us to be listed, um, as additional insured on the insurance.
Are you, I'm not lying, are you? There, no.
So, we're here to answer any questions, but mostly Mindy, but we're excited for this opportunity that.
So Mindy and that, so.
This is, I, so I'm the state coordinator, so I'm the one in charge of the program. This is Savannah. She's one of our team reps for our local team, one of our teams here in the, in the basin. Um, so our program's a little different than most archery organizations. It's youth. Um, we only go up till their eighteenth birthday and they graduate from high school and then we hopefully push them into collegiate archery and get them on the college. Um, our high school kids are actually shooting for college scholarship opportunities. So if you win the state event, I hand you a stack of scholarships of colleges that are interested in talking to you. We actually now have a collegiate program in the state of Utah. Um, it's Donovan Price, uh, U S U Eastern. Um, their coach is actually going to be coming to all of our state events to try and recruit our local kids. Um, the majority of the kids are coming from U N Basin. Uh, last year we had sixty participants. This year we have a hundred and twelve signed up for the state indoor, so we're growing very rapidly. Um, of that, seventy percent of them is coming from U N Basin, Vernal and Roosevelt particularly. The reason we're thinking about Roosevelt is because it's more centrally located, um, for all the kids, because we want these kids to continue and when finances play a factor in parents' decisions, um, the closer we can get the shoots to them. Um, there are kids on the west edge front. We all know that highway only goes one direction. We like it when we make them come the other direction. Um, and so we're trying to keep the shoots here in the basin. Um, Teddy's Playground is perfect for us. Um, the shoot we want to put out there is three D, so if you don't know what three D is, it's the animals. Um, and we're trying to teach them hunting scenarios. So we bring in D W, D N R, we actually have a conservation coordinator that teaches these kids to be ethical, uh, bow hunters. That's what we want these kids to be. We don't want them out there flipping sticks and not doing what they're supposed to do. Um, so Teddy's Playground where it has the cedar trees and sagebrush, everyone thinks it's awful, we think it's perfect. Give me a cliff, we can make it work, um, because those kids need to learn to shoot elevations. Um, these aren't the kids, these aren't like the strange kid that's gotta go and flipping sticks at anything that moves. These kids train. Um, these kids are trying to go to college, these kids compete. We have a nap, a young lady here from Roosevelt, Kaisley Carter, her mom Stephanie Carter, I'm sure you're aware of her from U B Tech. Kaisley's a multiple-time national champion. She took third place in Vegas last year, which is the biggest tournament in the world. Um, these kids have worked their tails off for this program. And we just want you to consider that location because it's perfect and it keeps the kids here. Um, we're looking at over a hundred people that's coming to Roosevelt, uh, for Vernal, for our indoor shoot. It's gonna be the Rotten Gun Club on, um, May first, or February first. Uh, we, I set up thirty hotel rooms aside on the block. I've already had to up that to fifty. So fifty hotel rooms to a community like Roosevelt, that's a lot of people coming in for an event. Um, they're gonna eat here, they're gonna get gas, they're gonna be here for, they usually come in the night before, so you get them at least at night. Um, we can raise prices for the weekend and really, you know, get it, make it worth our time. Um, so we really would like you to consider it. Do you have any questions or anything we can answer?
What's the, I'm sorry, what's the requirement on the city side? Just allowing you to use the playground?
Yeah, we just need the facility. We bring in all the equipment. I have the targets out of the animal. We do want to ask if we can camp there so that our animals don't walk away, um, that night. They, they're kind of crazy like that. Um, but that's it. We just need a place. We clean up after ourselves and we need it for the day. Um, we, the one thing about Teddy's Playground, I know they've got the disc off already pretty much set up. We, we won't even bother that because there's a little spot on the other side of the road we can use or we can shoot off their tees that they're put in and just place the animals differently, um, so.
How many locations, or how many targets are you planning on, like different?
So twenty right now. Uh, we're probably gonna have to shoot two different groups, the younger kids will go through and then the elders. Um, because that's all the animals we have, so they shoot, um, a twenty target round this way.
And I know there was a little bit of concern with Teddy's Playground and, and we were wondering if it's something that we could do out at the shooting range, because that's, that's more of an appropriate spot as far as to hold that type of thing. And then, but one of the questions was, is there a reason why Teddy's Playground over that? And I think you've answered some of that with, you know, some of the terrain and, and
Yeah.
trees and things like that.
Terrain is definitely better for us. And their maximum shot is forty yards is all these kids are allowed to go out to. So we're not talking two hundred yard, hope the arrow goes somewhere kind of shots.
Have you looked at what's available at the shooting range?
I have not. I've only looked at pictures and things at the range.
It's a big property, um, different kinds of terrain, probably not, uh, the trees. But I have some concerns with use of Teddy's Playground. Uh, would like, we at least look at the shooting that would work and then maybe come back and talk about the two locations.
When are you wanting to host the?
May tenth is the date we're hoping for.
May tenth, and how soon do you need an answer?
February first, but I can relax.
When is our meeting in February? What, what's the date?
Four, the fourth.
The fourth. Okay, we could, we could definitely have a for sure answer for you by the fourth.
Okay.
And are there things out there that you're worried about? Is that your concern or what?
That's part of it. Uh, also kind of setting a precedent where people see that shooting's being allowed in there, where that's really not what we're wanting and worried that people may just think that it's
A shooting range.
and why it is okay to shoot there, uh, a- all the time is my biggest one. But then we're trying to draw that kind of thing to the shooting range. And so while it's a little bit of a negative, a Teddy's Playground is a positive up at the shooting range. So if it's something that we could make work up there, uh, from a liability standpoint, I would definitely rather scale it.
Is there, and I know Grant, we have, you know, we've talked a little bit in the admin meeting, but is there a major, um, liability concern that you see other, other than just that?
There, of course, there is some liability concern, but it's, it's not huge. Um, I'm not opposed to the activity. It's the location that I have concerns with right now. I really have no concerns with finding a place on the shooting range.
And so, I mean, and that, yeah, it doesn't mean that we couldn't do it. It's just, I mean, that is the recommendation. Any other thoughts or questions on that though?
You'd have to. I mean, if it was allowed at Teddy's, make sure there were no free golf.
Yeah, how do you, are you gonna shut it down? How's that work?
Yeah, that was our plan. Um, just to shut it down and. Yeah, that was our plan, was to shut it down and host it, let people know what are we happening and what's going on.
We're working the bike track and stuff there too, though my concern again is that if it's allowed there sometimes, people are gonna think that it's okay to shoot there. And so it's, I don't have concerns with this group or on the day that they're doing it. It's just possible ramifications with, with other people. So I'd really like to move it to the other location. But I understand there are some specific things that they're looking for. That's why I'm asking if they can at least look at the other location and see if, if it would serve the same purposes.
Yeah, the, um, the other thought I had, how many acres, hundred and twenty is what it's out there, Teddy's Playground?
Yeah, about that.
And what, how big of an area are you looking for in general? To set up twenty targets, forty yards, I'm just, because I, but Grant, I'm just, you know, is there a way? That there's a portion of that that could be dedicated to that, so that if there were any other shoots, but then that kind of complicates things too, I'm just...
I know APR has plans for an archery range out there that they'll be coming to, they'll be bringing to you. Right now, they're, you're trying to use the west side of the road, but I don't believe there's anything set up right now, it's kind of dead space.
I was wondering, how much room is on the west side of the road?
So opposite of where the, does Frisky Golf, yeah, does Frisky Golf go all the way on the west side too, or is it just on the east side?
Well, we should, Frisky is still here, but I think...
When we looked at it, it was all on the one side where the parking lot is, and so we were looking at the other side of the, the road.
Maybe if you could go and look at the shooting range, and then also bring a map, like a map of where it'd be laid out, and both, and either one. Does that make sense, so that, I think that would be, because if it is on the west side and there's really nothing that it interferes with, that does release some, I think... Especially if there's gonna be a shooting range, but I would like to see the APR's plan for a shooting range there long-term, because that's gonna be an issue.
Yeah, and we've been aware that that was coming too, and I've been thinking the same thing, pushing it to the other front.
Exactly. But if you give us two scenarios, and then if you can kind of get a Google Earth just layout of the twenty targets and how much room that's gonna take up and where you can put that. I think we want to definitely try to make it happen for you, because we're excited about this. We just want to make sure that it's a venue that we can repeat year after year, and not give other members of the public the wrong idea of...
Oh, we understand.
Those areas are to be used for, just in case somebody sets up a target out there and starts, and then, then we have altercations because somebody got an arrow shot at them.
We can do that.
Awesome, we're excited, and...
Yeah, thank you.
I, I love the idea, and it's neat to hear that we have some tough competition here in the U N Basin.
It's a great team for kids, we appreciate it, it gives us much...
Thanks, thank you, thank you.
We keep creating new storms.
Moving targets, she puts blunt arrows, you know, being like the new paintball. Alright, Innovation Hub Damage Deposit, Mr. Bank?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, the Innovation Hub is up and running, we have five out of the nine offices filled, and we have not even fully opened it yet to everybody. We are transitioning those from the old Innovation Hub over with the new contracts, working with them because we did know anybody's thinking that they were kicked out immediately. So we've been working to transition those new, those previous individuals over there. And so we have multiple people that are waiting for the additional offices. One thing that we are opening up is the conference room for individuals to rent. We are opening it up to the general public, not just to the tenants, but one thing that we're definitely concerned about, and I need to backtrack. As you know, Sierra's taken over the role as our deputy recorder, she is also serving as our supervisor of the Innovation Hub. So she's been fantastic in helping with the individuals over there, and she'll be spending one to two days a week over there as well, helping those individuals. So gotta give credit to her, she's been fantastic helping out over there. So as we rent out the conference room over there, we want to make it so, for example, the Utah State's Entrepreneur Club could meet over there and have a presentation. The apprenticeship program for the state of Utah, they are interested in holding a workshop over there. So we want to rent it out to individuals and companies that would like to use the space. And as it's new and we're getting things out, our plan is to rent it out for free as long as individuals come scheduled through Sierra. So temporarily, we definitely need to have something in place where some, where we get a damage deposit, just so nobody damages the rooms they come in. So what we're requesting tonight is a council would give approval to Grant to draft up a fairly boilerplate agreement with a one-hundred percent refundable deposit for individuals while they use a conference room during this stage of introductory rate. And then approximately, our goal is in six months, we're hoping that there'll be enough interest, that then we'll come back to council with a proposed rate where individuals can rent the room for X number of dollars, and we'll have a set damage deposit then as well. So right now, we're just requesting that Grant draft up a boilerplate temporary agreement where we can have a fully refundable deposit for individuals that want to schedule their conference room.
What amount are you looking at for the damage deposit?
You know, we talked about different amounts, I was thinking around a hundred dollars. The big part here is just getting individuals to understand that, hey, if something happens, because again, if they damage it more, they're gonna be on the hook. We're gonna have their contact, they have to register in advance to reserve the room. But as we know, a lot of people, as long as they have skin in the game up front, they'll respect the room more.
Does the library charge anything on these corners? Or have any...
Do they, do they for nonprofits as well, or is it for everybody?
Could not charge like us, I don't believe that they've charged Shanker, but yes, I do know that they charged me, I just don't know what it is.
Can we look at that and see, because the other thought I had is, we could even charge a, a small fee that include, or a fee that includes the damage deposit? Yeah, and then if they don't do any damage, then the majority of that would be refunded, but then we'd like the small fees for administrative costs.
Twenty-five dollar fee or something.
So the Vernal Community Room at Vernal City Offices, that large room, for nonprofits, then you charge twenty-five dollars to use it. And so it is more for private functions, for say, example, a wedding, but, so like the high school hockey team, we have our Christmas party there, it's twenty-five dollars. So that's why I was wondering what our library does, whether it's non-profit or not.
I'd look into that and see.
And are you wanting to limit what kinds of things there, or you wanting to keep it more like professional things, or four-year-old birthday party? Do you know what I mean, like, are you...
There won't be requirements, because in the agreements, lease agreements, there's applied use of enjoyment, so there are those certain restrictions on what can be there based off of how, you know, easy the eye. But right now, during the introductory period, is where we just want to get people in there.
Using it.
Yeah, and that's why this agreement, we know it's short-term, but we'd like to get something going. We have a waitlist of individuals that are waiting to schedule, but we don't want to let anybody in there until we get the, some type of a deposit.
And is it something like Sierra would have to let them in, or just during when it's open, or?
We could arrange it with Sierra based off that, the tenants will have twenty-four-hour access to the building. But everybody that uses the conference room, go get on the schedule. So for example, we're having a leadership meeting tomorrow with some of the division managers, and we're holding it over there. So I had to check with Sierra, make sure nobody's rented it out, which of course they haven't, because we're not allowing people to yet. But that would be the process, they would call Sierra, give the information, schedule a time to make sure it works, and then get access.
I like the idea, I would just give the library and see kind of how they charge, because I do think that there probably be, could be some of that that we would keep for the, well, I shouldn't say, the administrative costs.
Yeah.
involve that.
I guess when we do have, like, there are people for renting the room, but then the damage deposit itself is separate. So much like what we do at the pool, where you have the fee of renting like the party rooms. But then you also have the fifty-dollar refundable deposit that they pay upfront to get the room. And then as long as they're not, they don't leave it completely trashed or damage anything, then that part gets refunded, where you keep the fee and so, which is what they pay after. So similar mindset, just making sure we cover our bases, just...
I would do something that, so we don't, I mean, it's probably boilerplate, like you said, but, so we don't have to re-visit it. Yeah, and something similar that other entities are already doing.
So, I won't bring back all the seeds.
So Mr. Bank, you need a motion for us to proceed accordingly?
For a temporary.
For a temporary?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Do you have that? Any opposed? Okay, motion is unanimous.
You may reveal what you'd say.
Yes, please, do the, um, let's do, just stay, but any questions on the financial, or on the expenditure?
No, I would move we approve.
Second?
Second, sorry.
Okay, we have a motion, second by Councilman Allen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I do apologize, and I do think that Mayor, tomorrow is Local Officials Day at the legislature. Mayor, I did just send you a...
We have to sign up.
You are supposed to pre-register, but you can...
Do it there. Oh, really?
So, yes, and this is one of the great activities, we get our U City Council, we can arrange to take them, but you can do it onsite.
So I'm wondering, we can talk right after the meeting, I might, we might bump some stuff. And if anybody wants to go out, let me know, then we can...
I'm not able to at this time.
And I do apologize, that was one thing I'd love to get out to council ahead of time, I don't know how I missed it either, but Mayor at least got it the day before, so thank you. Second thing, probably even more exciting tomorrow, our ice rink will be open officially tomorrow. The ice is frozen, ready to go, so break out your ice skates or hockey sticks.
It was cold today, too.
I don't know whether to be excited or...
Grateful or not.
Because it's cold.
However, next week might warm up a little, so. Get in some ice skating right away.
Ten, ten days, it's a good ten days, but then the fifteen-day forecast is not in our favor, so we really want to encourage people to get out there for ten days.
In the final item I have for City Manager Report, I am very excited to announce publicly to council that I will be closing on the house in Roosevelt City, beginning of buying a house. Unfortunately, someone is moving away that we don't want moving away, but personally, I'm extremely excited she's moving away, because we're buying her house. So next month, I will officially be a Roosevelt City resident, living here, and my key will be much better, so.
Awesome.
As my City Manager report, I did report that. Any other questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Committee reports, anything else regarding committees? Alright, so now we're moving to out of discussion. No need for closed session tonight, I hope. Alright, do you have a motion to adjourn?
Second, who, who motioned?
That's...
And a second by...
Just to screw Sierra's notes up.
Councilman who's...
I wonder why.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
We are good.